Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on April 4, 2025. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure that you're able to hear any discussion. Thank you. Watch the mic, Jane. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District One and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, April 21, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Presentation of Colors and Pledge of Allegiance led by Central High Schools, JROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Excuse me. If you're going to interrupt the meeting, we'll have to ask you to leave. Thank you very much. Ms. Snipes will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
The vision: every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Almanza.
Present.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Paul.
Here.
Holman.
Crackey.
Here.
Magnusson.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Present.
Healan.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Dr. Holman, who did contact me about an hour ago. She is driving back from Western Nebraska. So moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ful. Roll call, please.
Crackey.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Healan.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passed. Up next is the school spotlight, and I would like to welcome Westview High School to the podium.
Good evening. President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, Board members, and Superintendent Ray. Principal at Westview High School, Thomas Lee. It is my pleasure to turn this mic over to our bowling coach and Dean of Students at Westview High School, Mr. Noah McKiever, who will introduce one of our awesome student athletes that we get to spotlight this evening. Thank you.
It's my honor, excuse me, voice a little raspy. It's my honor to introduce a student who embodies excellence in every sense, Taryn Stern, a proud product of OPS from start to finish. Taryn is a standout in every arena. She's involved in National Honor Society, she's a student ambassador for Westview, she's involved in Student Council, Book Club, she's a founder of our Feminism Club, and she's the newspaper print editor. She actually proofread this before I gave it. You name it, she's in it. Taryn plans to attend University of Pennsylvania in Kutztown, and she plans to major in Library Sciences and maybe return to OPS one day. On the lanes, she's been a force for three years, on varsity, and has won our team's Wolverine Leadership Award two years in a row, not just for her talent, but the way she lifts everyone around her. She helped build our bowling program into what it is today, and just capped it off with something historic: the first championship in school history. And not only that, after she qualified for state, she wrapped her way to manifesting a title. And then what did she do? She delivered. Coaching Taryn has been one of the great joys of my career. She's not just an amazing bowler, she's an even better human. And Board members, if you're moved by greatness tonight, maybe you guys could slide in a little help funding for a couple of state championship rings for us. Please help me in welcoming our first state champion in school history, Taryn Stern.
Hello. I'm Taryn Stern. I'm a senior at Westview High School. I've been at Westview since it opened, when I was a sophomore, and being at Westview has seriously changed my life in so many ways. I couldn't even count on 10 fingers the reasons why I love Westview. Winning the state title kind of also changed my life a little bit. I learned really to believe in myself, and even more than that, I learned how many people at Westview believe in me. It was kind of overwhelming, the influx of emails I received from staff members, from my friends, from people I've never talked to before. It kind of opens your eyes, and it helps you realize how great of a place you're actually in. Yeah.
Thank you very much. For as long as Westview will exist, you'll always be the first one, which is remarkable. Do any of our Board members have questions that they want to follow up with? Ms. Ful.
Thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations. It's awesome.
Thank you.
You said you're going to UNO?
I'm actually attending Kutztown University in Pennsylvania.
Okay. Do they have a bowling team?
They do.
Okay.
Yes, I have been in contact with their coach.
Awesome.
So we'll see, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks where that path takes me.
Great. Yeah, I was like, I hope you continue to do this in college, because I know there are some colleges that have a bowling team, so that's really exciting.
It's still pretty new, but yes.
Yeah, awesome. Well, it is great to be in the presence of your greatness, and also in the presence of Mr. Lee's greatness, because he was just inducted into the OPS Hall of Fame, which is awesome as well, so I just want to give you a little shout out, too. There is so much good happening at Westview, so it's awesome for you to be a part of it. Thanks.
I second that. Thank you, Ms. Ful. Ms. Snipes?
So, congratulations, and going back to the Feminist Club, it's a pretty bold move to make, so I'm just wondering, what made you start that, and what kind of an impact has that had on Westview?
So, I remember being at like, a football game my sophomore year, and people get pretty heated at sporting events, but I did hear a couple things being said about girls in general, and I was still pretty young, I had just turned 16, could barely drive, but I like, thought maybe there's someone out there who would help me make a difference in my school, especially being so new. We were so encouraged to try new things and to get involved, so I contacted a couple teachers, few curriculum specialists, just anybody who would help me. And we just meet on Fridays, and we just talk about anything we want, from social issues to what we're doing that weekend. It's just a place of support, and there's never any discrimination. It's something that I think a lot of people need, and it's an area that anybody from all backgrounds can come to, and I do lead the meetings, but I rarely talk. And it's just something I'm really grateful again for having the opportunity at Westview to do something like that.
Mrs. Crackey?
Congratulations, and I wonder how many of our, do we know how many of our schools have a bowling team? Do you know? Does anyone?
I think, yeah, all OPS schools do, yes.
They all have one?
Yeah.
I just think it's a good opportunity to say.
The like, best day of the bowling season is the OPS invite, where we're all there playing against each other.
Right. Where do you go when you go bowling?
We usually go to Maplewood Lanes.
Okay. Most everybody goes there? It is high school, or do they go to South Omaha areas?
The OPS, they all have like, their home lanes, so.
Okay.
Bird goes to Mockingbird, we're at Maplewood, I know Benson goes to West Lane, one of this. Omaha North will come up to Maplewood.
That's right. I didn't know they were all doing that, so it's a good opportunity to do something that maybe you can be good in. If I bowl, and it goes the right way, I act like I knew it was going to do that, but I've watched something, you know, on TV, and watched them. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I'm really excited that you're going to pursue a career in life as a librarian. That was, that was the career I wanted when I, a long time ago, but then I realized it wasn't just about alphabetizing and telling people to be quiet, so there's a little more to it than that. And these are interesting times to be a librarian, so I'm assuming you will be able to take your individual skills and self-confidence, of which you have a lot, into your career as a librarian, and come back to Omaha.
Hopefully, one day, yes. Thank you.
I think that's all the questions we've got. Would you and your fellow Westviewians come by and say hi to the Board members? Well, that's very exciting. Thank you again, West, Wolverines, right? Thank you Wolverines for coming to visit us. We're going to move on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ray. The financial reports for February, March 2025 have been prepared and are attached to the agenda for your review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Ray.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the Board, and our community. At our last meeting, we highlighted the important work ahead of us through April and May. Last week, our final improvement day and late start of the year occurred. Articulation Day is just around the corner on April 21st. That day is dedicated to reviewing student work, reflecting on instruction, and improving a student's entire experience from early childhood through graduation. Investing this time for improvement helps us make the most of every day in session. Also a reminder, juniors take the ACT tomorrow, April 8th. There will be no school for freshmen, sophomores, or seniors. The ACT is our statewide test for 11th graders. It gives us important data on academic progress while helping students access secondary opportunities. We have much more later on this topic, this topic later in the meeting, but it was a privilege on Friday to help launch Project Game On. Welcome to our partners and guests tonight, guests tonight, who we will introduce later when the action item comes up. Thank you also, too, to the Omaha Public Schools Foundation for its support of this project. Our Board will consider appointments to the OPSF Board of Directors also tonight. OPSF is an essential partner and supporter, making an impact for students, staff, and families throughout our school district. A copy of tonight's congratulations report will be on school and district homepages tomorrow, celebrating student and staff achievements. To everyone watching, please take a look if you're not already. From art awards to robotics, journalism to HOSA, our students and staff are achieving great things. I also want to recognize the Omaha Public Schools Research Team for earning a Qualtrics XM Breakthrough Artist Award. It celebrates research's commitment to student, staff, and family engagement, listening, and lifting people's voice and feedback so we can do better. To Scott Schmidt and his team, thank you for your dedicated service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Now we'll go on to public comments. I'll find my script for that. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have, I think, five or six, one, two, three, five speakers who have submitted requests to speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, and ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak, and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a specific student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member, and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. As a reminder, Nebraska Revised Statute 841412 requires that any member of the public -- can I do that after? Okay, thank you. I've just been reminded that I skipped above board comments, so we'll get back. As a reminder, Nebraska Revised Statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the Board identify yourself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. We have no requests for a waiver this evening. We ask that you please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any organization before you begin your public comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until your call to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the Board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Dr. McFarland will come and get them from you. As a final note, public comment is set aside for you to comment on matters which you wish to present to the Board. Board members will not respond during public comment. If you would like to discuss anything with a Board member, please feel free to contact them or the appropriate member of the staff directly. It is now 6:19, and our first speaker is Mr. Justin Riddle.
Good evening. I'm Justin Riddle, J U S T I N R I D D L E, got it? And tonight, I'm going to talk kind of fast, and I'm not going to explain much, because nobody ever listens to me anyways, but I will drive it home a little. That girl that was just up here, Taryn, is one of my daughter's best friends, she's on the bowling team. They've actually been the captains for two now, straight years, so I'm actually a real person in this community, just in case anybody didn't know. Now, did a little math, and you guys know what's coming, and that's why you're not looking. $5 million is how much these fools have spent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Riddle, did you give us your address?
16422 Patrick Ave, got it? Start my time over, please, thanks. $5 million. Now, that's equivalent to five times what it costs to prosecute Charlie Manson, that's equivalent to nine months of straight trials for OJ, their attorneys, which that chick over there is one of their in-house attorneys. Why didn't you guys ever tell me you had three in-house attorneys? Yet you're paying $250,000 a month? Now, I'll tell you guys why they're doing that. I'm skipping ahead, I'm not even looking at my sheet. They're doing it because these attorneys, in-house, like Brash, have a responsibility to the truth, because they're paid by public funds. Instead, they're spending your public funds on attorneys that are outside of the district so that they can lie. Everybody knows it. Now, I'm going to skip ahead to Leading Educators, Inc., and y'all know what I'm saying, and I'm going to go right past that, I'm smoking you all on that. And guess what? I'm forensic, I actually learned Python this week. You know why? I found out I can build a program that goes through all this data and just does a forensic audit, and I am smoking you fools, but I'm going to get to the important stuff right now. We already talked about OJ. Actually, Jeffrey Dahmer, Unabomber, Anthony Weiner, Lori Loughlin, Derek Chauvin, Ghislaine Maxwell, and Elizabeth Holmes, all those combined is how much OPS has spent to fight me from getting records of me. All I asked for was one meeting, one meeting that I attended, that they did something wrong, $5 million. That's 100 teachers' salaries, folks. Don't listen, I don't care. I'm putting it on record, because right now, they also have federal judges, local judges, the Attorney General, and guess what? I'm saying it all on record right now. I swear, under penalty of perjury, I certify every single word I'm saying is true. Look at them. I've been coming here for four years, $5 million in the last two, and guess what? None of you will do anything anyways. Don't care. I'm here to put it on record, because everybody else apparently doesn't care about our student. Actually, this one, I have a four-year-old non-verbal autistic child who's been on an IEP in this district since he was two. He doesn't talk, he relies very heavily on people being honest. Why are you guys paying in the special education fund to bear at home in the amount of tens of thousands of dollars a month? Because my kid's on an IEP, you feel like you can code that special education? Let me ask you a question, folks. You all made a, oh, Ray, I'm going to come back to that. Oh my God, what I found out about, no, I'm going to come back to that, because people won't believe me anyways. I just simply don't care. You can look it up. Guess what, folks? Go to www.charterwestbank.com. You know, the local bank? I own their website.
One minute.
I own their website. Same with the daily probe. Yep. So, go look. Lots of, lots of facts and evidence. You folks are disgusting. Ray is nodding up there. None of them pay attention, none of them look at anybody when they're talking. Well, not none of you. Nancy, obviously, I love you, and honestly, Snipes, you have kind of grown on me, and I don't know why, because it's not like we agree. You, on the other hand.
30 seconds.
Felt like you didn't need to say the Pledge of Allegiance, Gina. Gina! Yes. Hopefully, my daughter doesn't find out from her friend that I was here tonight, embarrassing myself and all these liars, but guess what? You have a choice to make, folks. My name is Justin Riddle. You can easily, easily, easily find me from all the destruction these liars have done online. Towards me, McFarland, Learners Educators, Inc., I'll be requesting it.
Time. Our next speaker is Michelle Rogers.
Hi there. Michelle Rogers, M I C H E L L E, R O D G E R S, 15565, Adams Street, number 303, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. I do have some, some content here, if somebody wants to pass this out, please. So, you guys definitely know why I'm here. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children regarding the books that are in the libraries. So, this book that I'm going to be speaking about, thank you so much, appreciate it, is called Crank, so, and it, it actually talks about explicit sexual activities, sexual battery, and a lot of profanity, and, and drug abuse. So, and prior to me starting this, I just want to just, first, just say, you know, I'm, I'm in no way trying to put, you know, like, highlight anything that you guys are doing wrong. I'm just coming here as a very concerned person that has unfortunately seen quite a few children go through a lot of different things, and unfortunately, they have said all because, well, I mean, it might have to do with, you know, some family stuff as well, but they're like, you know what, but I read something, I read something here, I read something there. So, and trust me, I have a very busy schedule, I don't want to have to do this every single, every single board meeting, but I still have an obligation to speak for the children, so that's why I am here. So, again, this book contains a lot of different things, and, and this book was actually banned, so it is not banned yet for OPS, but I'm just praying that you guys hear me out on this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I was just going to say, I'm really excited that you're going to pursue a career in life as a librarian. That was, that was the career I wanted when I, a long time ago, but then I realized it wasn't just about alphabetizing and telling people to be quiet, so there's a little more to it than that. And these are interesting times to be a librarian, so I'm assuming you will be able to take your individual skills and self-confidence, of which you have a lot, into your career as a librarian, and come back to Omaha.
Hopefully, one day, yes. Thank you.
I think that's all the questions we've got. Would you and your fellow Westviewians come by and say hi to the Board members? Thank you again, West, Wolverines, right? Thank you Wolverines for coming to visit us. We're going to move on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ray. The financial reports for February, March 2025 have been prepared and are attached to the agenda for your review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Ray.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the Board, and our community. At our last meeting, we highlighted the important work ahead of us through April and May. Last week, our final improvement day and late start of the year occurred. Articulation Day is just around the corner on April 21st. That day is dedicated to reviewing student work, reflecting on instruction, and improving a student's entire experience from early childhood through graduation. Investing this time for improvement helps us make the most of every day in session. Also a reminder, juniors take the ACT tomorrow, April 8th. There will be no school for freshmen, sophomores, or seniors. The ACT is our statewide test for 11th graders. It gives us important data on academic progress while helping students access secondary opportunities. We have much more later on this topic, this topic later in the meeting, but it was a privilege on Friday to help launch Project Game On. Welcome to our partners and guests tonight, guests tonight, who we will introduce later when the action item comes up. Thank you also, too, to the Omaha Public Schools Foundation for its support of this project. Our Board will consider appointments to the OPSF Board of Directors also tonight. OPSF is an essential partner and supporter, making an impact for students, staff, and families throughout our school district. A copy of tonight's congratulations report will be on school and district homepages tomorrow, celebrating student and staff achievements. To everyone watching, please take a look if you're not already. From art awards to robotics, journalism to HOSA, our students and staff are achieving great things. I also want to recognize the Omaha Public Schools Research Team for earning a Qualtrics XM Breakthrough Artist Award. It celebrates research's commitment to student, staff, and family engagement, listening, and lifting people's voice and feedback so we can do better. To Scott Schmidt and his team, thank you for your dedicated service. Thank you.
this and just kind of do some of your own research on it. So, there's this one that starts on page 87 of this book. It says, "I watched him pour powder, yellowish-white. It will take you to heaven. Use the blade to chop the chunks fine. Draw two crooked lines. Make you want to fly all night. He held the mirror to my face and handed me a sawtooth straw. Make you want to make love to me." Obviously, talk about doing drugs. This one is talking about this lady being sexually assaulted. "Hands covered my mouth. Rough, held my arms. Strong tore my clothes vicious. Fear danced up my spine and jolted my brain, dripped onto the ground. I screamed, 'No. No.' I screamed into dirty flesh. Not this way. Buttons burst, zippers opened. I closed my eyes and I braced for pain." Oops, sorry. Page 341. "Not for long. My shirt tore open. Wait. I waited for weeks. Put up and shut up. Kiss, sagut, tibites, bruises. Pain rippled through my body. Brendan, please stop. No, you promised, you damn little tease. Off came my shorts. Down went his zipper. I realized I was in serious trouble. I'll scream. Go ahead, no one can hear you, but skunks and coyotes. Still, as I opened my mouth, his hand slapped down on it. Just relax and you'll love it. They all love it. Had he done it a different way, I might have responded with excitement. Instead, I froze as he pushed inside. There it is. Oh, God, there it goes. It all went, all right there with an audible tear. Pain mushroomed into agony and all I could do was just go stiff. You weren't lying, you stupid word. I laid there sobbing as he worked and sweated over me and stoked by the monster. It took him a long time to finish. So, he pulled away sticky and bloody, throbbing inside and out. I didn't move, didn't dare look him in the eye. What the hell is matter with you, Bree?" Last one. "All I could do was more crank so that maybe I could halfway enjoy it. I was dirty. After he started, he got mean. He did things to me, terrible things. I've still got the scars. Things that no sane person would ever do. Of course, he wasn't exactly sane and neither was I." So, I mean, this is pretty, I mean, those are just the most graphic things that I could think of, but I mean, this book is, I mean, it is absolutely terrible. So, I'm just asking you guys just to please look into this and to take it off the shelf so that I don't have to keep on doing this. I have a lot more other things I could be doing, but I just wanna just come to you guys in a very respectful way and just say, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Michaela Kazor.
Good evening, my name is Michaela Kazor, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-A-K-A-Z-O-R. My address is 11619 Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. Good evening, Board members, parents in the community. I stand here today to stand for the children and I believe that we all have one common goal that we share and it's the well-being of our children. Today, I ask you to consider what's truly appropriate to be in our school libraries, not through the lens of politics, but through the lens of reason and responsibility. We're not talking about censorship or banning ideas. We're talking about age appropriateness and the line between education and exposure. Let me show you what's sitting on your shelves and if there's any minors in the room or watching, I just wanna let you know that this has explicit content and I advise you to leave because I don't want you exposed to it. First, the first book that I'm reading is from Gender Queer by Maya Khabib and it's available at Benson High School and multiple other high schools in your district. This is from page 167 and there's pictures, but I didn't bring them, but it shows all of this. So, the illustration in the book is at the top of the page and it depicts a woman kneeling with a penis in her mouth from a top view. The text next to the image reads, this is a visual I've been picturing. And then the illustration on the middle page, of the middle of the page, is a woman standing with a shirt on. Her pants are unbuttoned and she's wearing a strap-on penis over her underwear. There is another woman, topless, kneeling with a strap-on penis in her mouth. The text in the image reads, "But I can't feel anything. This was much hotter when it was only my imagination." That's not a fleeting reference or an abstract lesson. It's a detailed vivid description and pictures of oral sex. If it was a movie scene, would you rate it PG-13 or rated R? Would you hand this book to your child and say, "Here, this is educational, read it with my approval"? Now, let's turn to November 9th by Colleen Hoover, found at Benson High School. This is from page 203, end quote. "And his hand. Oh, God, his fingers are slowly chasing up the front of my panties. I moan again, twice. He puts just enough space between our mouths so that he can listen to me gasp as he slides his hands down the front of my panties. My knees grow weak. I'm not sure I knew my body was capable of feeling these kind of things. I think I just fell in love with my body a little bit more. Jesus, Fallon, Ben says, stroking me, breathing heavily against my mouth. You're so wet. This isn't a subtle nod to grow..." End quote. That's the end of the book. "This isn't a subtle nod to identity or growing up. It's an explicit sexual encounter. Is this what we want a kid in your district to stumble across while looking up something to read in their library? I'm not here to vilify these books or their authors, but schools have a responsibility. We're entrusted with shaping young minds, not overwhelming them with material that they're not ready to handle. Science tells us that adolescents' brains are developing. Impulse control, judgment, emotional regulation aren't fully there yet. Exposing them to graphic sexual content doesn't empower them. It risks normalizing adult experiences that they're not equipped to process. I know some of you value inclusivity and free expression, and I do too, but freedom isn't a free-for-all. We have a responsibility to protect our children. If we hesitate to read these passages aloud here in this room because they feel too sexual, too explicit, then why are they okay for a 13-year-old to check out in this district? This isn't about silencing voices, it's about timing and context. Our kids deserve literature that inspires education and respects where they are in life, not books that thrust them into adult realities before they're ready. I urge you, review these titles. Set a clear standard for what's age appropriate. I had a meeting with part of your administration and they told me that they have a fuzzy line of what's appropriate in this district and that's not okay. We should have an exact what is appropriate for our kids and it shouldn't be fuzzy. It's, I mean, sex is like inappropriate. It's a reason why it's a private life. So, I urge you to protect our students' innocence while still fostering their growth. We can disagree on plenty, but surely we can agree that childhood innocence is worth protecting. Thank you."
Our next speaker is Ben Wilson.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ben Wilson. That is B-E-N-W-I-L-S-O-N. My address is 3115 Corby Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. Thank you all for being here today and I thank you for the opportunity to present. I am presenting on behalf of the Center for Holistic Development. So, the Center for Holistic Development is a nonprofit that provides behavioral health services for families and individuals. We try to focus on wraparound services that address all the social needs of our kids and our adults and our family units. I'm here specifically today to talk about our youth programs and to talk about how our youth programs can be of help within the OPS school system. So, currently, we use three different programs for our 4th grade through 12th grade students. They include a program called the Empower Project, Urban Youth Bolt, and Real Talk. I'll briefly discuss each of these programs and then share some points about how they can be beneficial to our students in this school district. So, the Empower Project is a social-emotional program that focuses on cognitive behavioral therapy. So, the program itself is not therapy or therapeutic, rather, the curriculum was created by researchers to take the core ideas of cognitive behavioral therapy so that teachers, students, staff, facilitators can easily teach it to themselves and to others. Those skills help with emotional regulation, solving problems, building up, you know, exposure to addressing fears someone might have about the future. They also focus on how to alleviate, say, like, symptoms of depression or anxiety. So, that could oftentimes be a helpful tool that educators or facilitators within the school can use if a student is feeling overwhelmed. We also have a program called Urban Youth Bolt. This is an Afrocentric program. It's led by instructors that are African-American and it focuses on the principles of Kwanzaa. So, those principles include unity, self-determination, collective work, and responsibility, cooperative economics, purpose, creativity, faith, and respect. Our goal with this program is really to build leaders. We wanna build leaders within the North Omaha community to impart cultural information and knowledge and to really empower our young people in Omaha. Finally, one of our programs called the Real Talk Program is a social-emotional learning program. We've had the opportunity to work at several middle schools and elementary schools. This teaches students how to be aware of the emotions they're feeling, how to manage their emotions, how to build healthy relationships, how to think through decisions even if they might feel strong emotions associated with those decisions. Our curriculum goes over self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationships, and responsible decision-making, and we use a lot of games, activities, videos, and discussion on real-world issues. The reason I bring this up is because I think OPS does a great job with their current system that they use with the SEL that's in the schools. I was just presenting to see if there's any opportunities for outside organizations like the Center for Holistic Development that could fill in any potential gaps that might be there. I've gone to different schools and the after-school staff has reported, you know, students being in school suspension.
One minute.
I was curious if there's any opportunities to work with students in a one-on-one mentoring session in in-school suspension to teach emotional regulation. I also provided a brief data sheet that kind of talks about the importance of how SEL can impact school grades, attendance, and classroom participation. I'll briefly share about that and then I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thirty seconds.
So, SEL's been associated with better graduation, post-secondary education, and stable full-time employment, as well as increased feelings of inclusion, belonging, and connection. That's really all I have to say. I encourage you to take a look at those flyers and reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Gerald Kuhn.
Good evening. Gerald Kuhn, 1612 North 24th Street. I'm currently the CEO of the Learning Community of Douglas and Sarbee County. My reason for coming in today was just to dote on your superintendent a little bit. He and I have been able to create some awesome partnerships that are helping children, who are really helping children and families, in our intensive early childhood plan. Our intensive early childhood program is working with children and families in early education and I'm excited to see the results for that in a couple of years. I just really enjoy working with Superintendent Ray. I enjoy the partnership with the Learning Community and the Omaha Public Schools. When I first came in as the interim CEO of the Learning Community, I went around to every superintendent and spoke with every superintendent about how can the Learning Community continue to be a partner with the public school system? And Matt and I discussed some opportunities, some areas for growth, and we are seeing the fruit of that now and I just wanted to let this body know that he's doing an excellent job, his staff is doing an excellent job, and if there's anything that I can do, I love the partnership and I just wanted to come in and let you guys know that. All right?
I'm advised, there's one thing you could do and that is, I think I forgot to have you give your address.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Oh, you did?
1612 North 24th Street.
Too fast.
Sorry about that. Did you get that? All right. Thank you. You guys have a great evening.
Okay, now we will go to Board Member Comments. Sorry about the confusion, folks. Who has comments? We'll start down at the end with Mrs. Krackey.
I'm giving the same comment I always give. Parents out there, how are we doing with the flashcards or whatever other way you have for your children to learn their flashcards and their facts? It will serve them so well as they go on in the upper grades. So, I'm wondering if, I know the flashcards have gone home with you, at least that's what I've been told by principals, and then the other issue is, well, what happens when they get there? Is anyone working with them to help them learn their flashcards so that they can go forward? You know, if they know those in each grade where they are introduced, just think of the difference that will make in their lives, in the rest of their journey. If they have that under their belt, they will go very far and I say it every time. And I would just love to hear from some parents that are doing that or schools that have done that or children who are just going to it and learning those. They're fun to learn. You can play games with them. There's Math Bingo and other things that you can do. So, I'm not just gonna, you know, I'm not giving up because we still have time to get it, get them learned and so we're ready for the next grade. Just think, we are into April. We have so many weeks left, not a whole bunch, but what is happening to make sure they're learning them? And so, with the last weeks, in the last two or three weeks, I always taught from second grade, I would teach, we'd get into flashcards for the third grade and the fourth grade. And so, you just go on up and everyone, if we work hard, we can just make a big, big difference. And this applies to everybody. The principals, the teachers, the parents, and their study buddies at school or wherever they are. So, just thank you for listening to this and I just love to hear how many really do this and follow through and we are making it a big success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Krackey. Ms. Magnuson, do you have any comments?
I do, thank you. President Rehber. I wanted to shed some light on the Omaha Education Association's Listening Tour. They have been opening some sessions to the public, educators, parents, community partners. I believe Ben Wilson was there at the last one I attended. And it's just to hear what the public would like, what thinks our students deserve in public schools. You know, we want OPS to be the best district in the state, in the country, so I hope you'll attend the next one. I believe it's April 18th at 6:30 at the Metro South Campus. And so, you can find that info on their website or on Facebook. And I also wanted to clear something up. Ordinarily, I would not explain myself in such a way. However, you may have noticed that I did not speak the Pledge of Allegiance tonight and I have not at any other night. That is because I am a military brat. I'm a former JROTC high school student, I'm a former college ROTC student, and I'm a former service member. It would not be appropriate for me to salute since I'm not in uniform. It would not be appropriate for me to salute since I'm not in uniform, so instead I stand at detention, which is what service members and former service members do when presented with the flag. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your service. Ms. Fo.
Yes, thank you. I didn't know that about you. Learn something new every day. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the Listening Tour as well. It was a great experience. I went to the one on the Metro Campus and I was really able to hear directly from the teachers about what they need in order to succeed and what they need for our students to succeed in the classroom. So, I want those teachers to know that I am taking your concerns to our administration, to our superintendent. I've been having conversations with him about the stuff that you brought up that night and beyond, about what we can do to improve learning conditions in our schools so everybody can thrive. So, wanted to let the community know about that. And I also wanted to make some broader comments, kind of what's going on at the national level because it is starting to trickle down into OPS. And I think people are really looking for transparency in this moment from our district about how this is actually impacting our classrooms, how this is impacting our children every single day. And I would like to bring you good news tonight, but I don't have any. I think we need to be diligent in, or diligent in this moment in making sure that we are communicating as a district about these changes. You know, I was gonna mention one specifically tonight, but I think I got a little bit mixed up with the way that it's funded and everything, but there, there are changes. There are new financial responsibilities that the district has now because the federal government has closed the Department of Education. And there are gonna be new tabs that we have to pick up because we're not getting that money from the federal government anymore. It's already happening. And so, I just want to try to be as transparent as possible in this moment. I've been getting phone calls from a lot of parents, especially special education parents, scared about the quality of their child's education, how that's going to be impacted. And I don't want to say you should be scared, but this is just the reality that we're living in right now. And I don't, I don't want to sugarcoat anything, but I can tell you that the district has a strong commitment to these students, our special education students, and not only those students, but every single student that steps into our school, into our schools. And we are committed to maintaining a high-quality education for every student and especially our special education students because we recognize the difficulties that are currently going on. And, you know, we want to maintain the education that we offer and we want to make it better. But that's only gonna happen if we are communicative, if we're all on the same page and we're transparent as a district. So, I just kind of want to address that a little bit. I'm sorry I can't give you more specifics, but this is all on everybody's mind. It's on Mr. Ray's mind, it's on all the board members' minds about how we are going to respond in, to this national moment. So, we remain committed to our students, to our teachers, to our staff every day. And that's really all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fo. Ms. Snipes.
Yeah, I actually have a few and Ms. Fo actually reminded me of something as well. And so, bear with me, President Erdenberger might need a couple of minutes. First, I am happy to, I guess not really announce, but we are having conversations with Superintendent Ray, with Mr. Maskel from the Communications Department about town halls for school board members, ways to really engage more with community, not saying that we don't, but there's levels to engagement, there's different ways to engage. And of course, I'm more partial as more of a grassroots sort of community activist and I just think it's important. And I think that Mr. Ray also feels like it's important to be more in front of the people. So, I am working with Mr. Maskel on that, kind of was voluntold by our President Erdenberger over here to do that. So, I am working on that. And I also wanted to just bring up that myself and some of our other board members, Mr. Smith, Mrs. Magnuson, Dr. Holman, we had the honor of attending the National School Boards Association Conference this past weekend and I have to admit that I left feeling way more inspired and grounded in the work ahead of us than I did when I got back from Washington, DC. Some of you may remember me talking about the trauma I felt. It's like LBBS laughing, but very serious. The trauma I felt while I was down in DC for the few days that we spent there from national experts like Melissa Stockwell, Pedro Noguera and Dr. Golding Muhammad. If you have not heard of these people, I encourage you to look them up. I was really reminded that leadership is about resilience and, and relationships and just radical imagination. So, one speaker asked the question, what if the ultimate goal of school was joy? And so, that question has really stayed with me since I left Atlanta yesterday. And so, we talked about special education funding, equity gaps, the importance of culturally responsive curriculum and how school boards must really lead through crisis with clarity and also with courage, as you were just saying. And so, I want you all, I just want to really thank the public for that, you know, for really supporting professional development like this because it really does matter for us and it also matters for our students. And while I was there, I purchased with my own money, President Erdenberger, this book called The Key Work of School Boards. And as I was reading it, I found it interesting because each time I get up here during these meetings, I read off our vision and our mission statement, and now I can't find it, of course. But every time I come up here, I do that. And as I'm reading this book, I just want to share some of the things that I underlined, right? As we do this every time we come into this space. It talked about vision quite a bit. And it talked about, you know, boards exercise leadership by holding themselves and staff accountable for monitoring student achievement, evaluating board and district programs in light of student learning and equity goals, providing appropriate training opportunities and keeping the public informed about the status of education programs and student progress. Vision means having a clear image of what better looks like and taking the necessary governance steps to get there. A vision with anything less than equitable student success as the top priority cannot fulfill public education's core purpose. The mission is a statement of purpose, the reason a school district exists and the business the school system is in. Where the vision provides the wings for the work of the district, the mission provides its roots, grounding it in purpose and values. And finally, vision becomes reality through the daily, and I will say that again, daily actions of everyone in the organization. In a school district, everyone includes employees, parents, community, advocates, businesses, government agencies and higher education. So, the next time I get up here and read our vision, every student, every day, prepare for success in our mission to prepare all students for success in college, career and life, I hope that we are really, really thinking about what they mean. They're not just words on a piece of paper, they are words that people put thought into to represent the work that we all must do together. So, I just wanted to share that as I was reading this book and that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Snipes. And I do know that you always bring back a lot from these conferences and I'm not just talking about all the books you buy. Mr. Tealyn, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Erdenberger. I think in regards to Ms. Fo's comment, I think, all due respect, I think the, you might have brought more heat than, than light to that particular situation. While we are all certainly looking very closely at what is happening with the Department of Education and how that might affect our district, I believe at this point, I might have my number incorrect here, but is that our budget, or the amount that has been affected is around 0.0004% of our budget. It's, it is something that it will affect a serious program and we will have to make decisions about where that money will come from. But, and we will continue to monitor this. There's obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty and we don't know where this is going to go. But at this point, I would not want to give people the impression that there are serious budget concerns because of what's going on at the federal level. That is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tealyn. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. And I appreciate just the opportunity to go to those conferences and just grow and develop. It does give a lot of tangible information to us as we are working as a board. And I'll speak from the community lens. I just appreciate the consistent engagement from our community. Thank you, CHD, for your partnership with Empower Network, Cradle to Career, Step Up, U360 and My Brothers Keeper. These are great programs and we really appreciate the partnership and what it is you want to do to kind of help our district get better. Along with what Ms. Snipes was saying, there's a lot of great work in education and advocacy going on and I went to DC and I felt kind of defeated, but when we get around educators who are actually doing the work, we've done a great job in being intentional in the work being done in policy, student success and fighting for public education and just defending the rights of our students to have that education, that the support they need. And so, I'm a what can we do person and so, if you could, get your cellphones out, everybody on TV, get your cellphone out. And you can text reject to the number 52886. 52886. And this was a number that was given to us at general, general session and that is to defend students' education, health and nutrition. So, to protect the attack on our students, parents, families and public educational resources. Text 52886 reject. And then, just my last point, as board members, we do a lot of reading to prepare for these, for these meetings, to prepare for committee things. And so, we do probably, I'll say for me, about anywhere from 20 to 30, 40, 40 hours of reading between the two weeks that we get a chance to meet. There's a lot of reading done in our meeting, our actual school board meeting and it would be great if instead of coming and reading to me, perhaps signing up to read to some of our pre-K through third grade classes, some books that you might feel are appropriate because we do appreciate the support for those who want to support that moonshot that we're trying to hit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Almanza.
President Erdenberger, thank you. And that's a great idea. I love that.
I wanted to take a moment to recognize Bryan High School and all the amazing things they're doing. They just had an alumni and friends event and I really, what stood out to me was the community coming together, like the Calvary Christian Church that donates and volunteers and Councilman Don Preister and many, many other volunteers. So, that was, that was heartwarming. Also, congratulations to their Urban Ag Academy and FFA convention and finalists and the staff that really supports our students. Oh, my goodness, they went and did presentations to the community and they just love our staff, the students, they are, they see them as coaches, mentors, so amazing. And then, last but not least, the Nebraska Supreme Court visited Bryan High as well. Amazing opportunities. I'm really excited to see all of these things happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Apparently, we can't mention Bryan High without Ms. Snipes having a chance to talk.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. I can't help it that myself and my son are proud Bryan Bears. I also want to just add one thing too about these conferences. It's also a chance to get to know the other board members better. And I had a really good time just getting to know other board members here at Omaha Public, but Nebraska does in a delegation down there. And we had discussions about interim policies and law and just all sorts of things that probably bore the average person, but for someone like me, it was really great. So, I just wanted to elevate that piece of it as well.
One more comment from me. Thank you. On that conference, I really appreciated as a brand-new board member, someone who's never sat in this seat before. I come from a corporate professional background and so, I'm very used to saying, hey, do that. Hey, I think this should be done. How do we make that happen? And something that I thought very deeply about after this, during, you know, throughout and after this conference was my manner of communication, most precisely with admin and other board members and how I can adjust myself and maybe eat some humble pie. Just learn how to be a, a better board member and a better steward for all of our kids. So, thank you for sending me to board member boot camp. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Magnuson. You are more than welcome to keep pushing. Don't snap your fingers at us, but pushing is what we expect. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, at this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. At this time, are there any items board members would like to pull from consent? Seeing none, I happen to know the only potential abstention was going to be Dr. Holman on today's agenda, so let's entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tealyn, seconded by Ms. Almanza. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Fo.
Aye.
Krackey. Magnuson.
Aye.
Adye.
Motion passes and we have one action item needed tonight. Approval of funding agreement with the Omaha Public Schools Foundation for the construction of a new stadium and renovation of existing facilities at North High School. First of all, I'm gonna one-up my Bryan Bear to my right and then introduce Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray?
Horrible to turn it over to me at that, after that. So, there's these times in our careers or life that we'll remember and we will remember tonight not because of public comment or because Jane had an outfit change at the board table, but we'll remember tonight because of the vote we're asking the board to take. For 100 years, North High has been a legacy in the Omaha Public Schools, from academics to athletics and any other sort of activity. So, tonight, the board is voting on the next 100 years. Project Game On is taking shape thanks to generous funders including the Logier and Sherwood Foundations and partners like the YMCA of Greater Omaha. It's because of the wise generous donation of land that has made this project possible. A North High Stadium at the New Butler Gas YMCA, these are game changers and this is why you will remember tonight. We can all imagine what this means for community, community members, but more importantly, for the students we serve at North High School. We can already see the spirit at home games, soccer matches and marching band competitions on the new field. Friday, I had an opportunity to meet four of our freshman football players who will play on that field. And that's why we do the work we do. That's why we sit through public comment. That's why we sit through heckling, is because the work is so important and it's more than those distractions. I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Operations Officer Charles Wakefield, 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 who will share more information, but who I want to acknowledge guests with us tonight. Trey Bashir from the Logier Foundation, Tara Thompson, Thomas from the YMCA of Greater Omaha. Charles Wakefield, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Mr. Charles Wakefield, who has spent a significant amount of time on this project and I'm sorry I messed up your name.
And I'm very willing to spell my name if that helps.
Yes. And your address.
If anybody wants to visit.
No, thank you. Thank you, President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray, recognize some of our guests in our audience. I also want to recognize Mr. Chris Humphries, our proud principal of North- I also want to recognize Mr. Chris Humphries, our proud principal of North High, and former principal Dr. Nero is also in the audience, so we do have quite a bit of North High representation among us tonight. As you know, as you do, we all want the very best for our students and for our community. And tonight, our community is here to help us provide a game-changing venue for our students and our student athletes at North High. The MOU before the board this evening facilitates our portion of Project Game On. This project, which Mr. Ray mentioned, is generously funded by our community led by the Logier Foundation, Sherwood, and in partnership with the YMCA, provides a stadium for North High athletes that is comparable to other metro area stadiums, potentially seating up to 2,500 guests, and amenities for visitors and athletes, including concessions, ticket booths, restrooms, team rooms, official rooms, all to support athletics, physical education, the arts, and so much more. This is game-changing for North High and for North Omaha. It's important to note that the project is fully funded thanks to our generous support from our community. Our community has come together to support our students as any good community will. And because of the wise donation of land, there is no eminent domain involved. As you can see with the early renderings, and I don't see them, so hopefully you can see the early renderings, the block east of North High will eventually look very different, being a community gathering spot for the YMCA, being a community gathering spot for North High. Friday, Mr. Ray acknowledged past students and staff who envisioned this possibility. We also heard from former principal Jane Haynes, who's in attendance tonight and was a big part of that effort. We are proud to carry this project forward. Work is set to begin this year and conclude sometime in the summer of 2027, just in time for football season 2027. The project team has built a website and social channels to keep people informed and keep the community informed, and we have linked those on our website as well. There is much more to come in the months ahead, but tonight, I'm happy to start with Trey Breshear from the Logier Foundation for a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Mr. Ray, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. The Logier Foundation was thrilled to help kick things off on Friday. So being back here with you tonight, to have their project partners to talk about the success of Project Game On is a real fun moment for me. As of this afternoon, 80,000 people have seen the project announcement through our various social media channels. The Logier Foundation often refers to its mission as leveling the playing field. So to be able to support a project that has been decades in the making, that has had a group of students 10-plus years ago get together and label that project leveling the playing field is a very fun moment for us and for our foundation. We and other funders are investing in Project Game On because it is simply time. It is time for North High to have the field that its students need to celebrate and to compete in their community. And it is time for North Omaha community to have a YMCA that maximizes all the technology and operational improvements that have become available during the last 30 years. We are excited to invest in this community. We are excited to invest in our young people. We are excited to invest in quality leadership, like we have at OPS and the YMCA. When these projects celebrate their grand openings, it will be energizing to see the elation and the vitality coming out of this previously underutilized parcel of ground. Too much of society today divides us, so the Logier and Sherwood Foundations are more than happy to invest in two facilities designed to create connections and enhance community for all. With that, I would like to encourage another project partner to the podium. Tara Thomas, Vice President of Advancement for the YMCA is with us tonight. Tara, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share a few words. This is truly a defining moment for North Omaha, and we're honored to see a vision of a reimagined Butler Gas take shape. The Butler Gas YMCA has been proudly serving the community for over 30 years. It's a special place and will continue to be so. Project Game On is about more than bricks and turf. It's about transforming lives. I can already imagine a young student from Skinner Elementary attending a North High home football game on a Friday night, and then that very next morning, returning to the same field, this time with their youth sports jersey on, getting ready to play their first game as a YMCA player. During that time, they're going to look up at North High and think about their future. They're going to think about all of the caring adults that have poured into them, about their possibilities, and what's in for them in the years to come. Being a future Viking is something that I think our community is going to be excited to lean into. This is a powerful example of partnerships. This collaboration and Project Game On is what community building looks like. Thank you for the opportunity to share the YMCA of Greater Omaha's excitement around Project Game On. It has been a true pleasure working with the partners and taking a vision into something that will truly serve so many. With that, I'd like to give the podium back to Mr. Wakefield.
Thank you, Tara. Nothing makes me prouder than when our district and our community come together in a tangible way to support our future. That's what you're seeing tonight. That future wouldn't exist though without our past. And so, representing our past, I have Mr. Gene Haynes, who will come up and say a few
Good evening. Thank you, board members, for allowing me this opportunity, and the committee, the leadership team from the Y, and Logier's cooperation, and Mr. Ray, the leader of the Besku District east of the Rockies and west of the Mississippi. And Omaha North is included in that. I was just knocked off of my feet when I met with the committee several weeks ago, and it was hard for me to keep it unwrapped, okay, when they were talking about it. But this is the opportunity, a dream of what students put together. The class engineering students, the class of 2014, met with me and proposed a plan for this. And I have given Mr. Ray, the superintendent, a list of all of those students that were part of that group, and we would like to continue to add and show that the students, their input is very, very important, and we want to make history. You know, and all we do now is go out of the building and go across the street, as opposed to load in a bus and go to Kinnick Stadium, which we've done for the past 25 years, and it's a place that we can call home. And I'm proud to be part of that addition of North High School.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. For those of you that were able to see Friday's press conference, it opened up with Ms. Rogers, our poet laureate from Nebraska, stating, "Today is the day that dreams come true." Tonight, we're asking you to make that dream true. So please do vote to support this resolution, partnering with Omaha Schools Foundation, Logier Foundation, and Sherwood. With that, I'll open it up for any questions for everyone else to answer.
Ms. Snipes looking like she has a question.
More like a statement. I'm just very excited about this. When I listen to people, my friends and my people in North Omaha, thinking about some of the even future plans for North Omaha, which involve pride, right? And Jane, or excuse me, President Erdenberger, I would have you know that my family was not from Omaha, Nebraska. They were actually from Farmerville, Louisiana, and North High School is the first high school that anyone in my family went to. My uncle Ray had to go to North High School when he moved to Omaha, and he's a proud graduate of North High, so it's a little bit near and dear to me, a little bit. I'm still a Bryan Bear. But, no, I'm just very, very happy about this and very proud of it. Pride is something I think that gets overlooked and not thought about, and it has a lot of impact. Joy is something that has a lot of impact. We heard a lot about joy this weekend, even at this conference. And so, when I think about it, I think about that type of impact on our young people, and that's something that's very important to me and speaks to me. So I just wanted to elevate that.
Any other comments? Mr. Smith.
Echoing that, this has been a long time coming. It's going to be a beautiful facility, and again, it's going to serve not just our athletes, but again, our families. There's a lot of people who utilize that space, and again, being able to just provide something for North Omaha, when Omaha North has been a gem for so many years, there's so many meetings and other things that that building is utilized for, it just makes sense now for us to be able to put things in place in order to take it to the next level. So I'm proud to be, I'll say, I'm going to definitely vote yes for this. It's Game On, and I want free hot dogs for every game that I come to.
How do you think we're going to pay for the stadium if we do that? Ms. Full, did you have your hand up?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the partners that made this happen, to Logier, to the YMCA, to the, to the foundation. Just thank you, thank you, thank you so much for making this happen. Like Mr. Smith said, this has been a long time coming for the North Omaha community. And, you know, when we talk about kids need more things to do to keep them out of trouble, this is exactly what we're talking about. This is going to make a tangible impact on my sub-district and on the community as a whole. So I am just so excited. I'm so thankful for our partners for making this happen. This is going to make a huge impact, and I hope you all realize that. I'm sure you do, but it's a big deal.
Thank you, Ms. Full, Mrs. Cracky.
Again, I'm going to repeat what they have said, but when we met there, when this, this part of our building was being renovated, I knew that there was a big need. I looked around and the sagging couch in the teacher's workroom, horrible. I mean, things really needed to be done. So I am so happy, and Mr. Haynes, we are just thrilled to have you here. Because you are in North High, you know that for years and years, no matter who is before or after, all the time, it always goes back to Gene Haynes, and I'm just so happy that you are here and talking to us about this. And I hope you'll be there when the first shovel is turned over, so we'll see your picture then too. I wish that we could enlarge that and show them the different sections, because we saw that as a board, and that might be interesting to people, to see where the parking is and the other things. Is there any way that that slide could be enlarged?
I'm working on it.
If you can't, it is available on projectgameon.org. That does allow frequently asked questions and has some other options on it as well. But if you go to that website, it'll have a lot more detail on it as well. And, yes, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. I think I just wanted to highlight the success of this as a public-private partnership. When, it really shows what can happen when serious people get together and work hard on a project and do the work, when we're committed to a positive vision for something we can accomplish for our community. And I think we, you know, we do have serious people in Nebraska. We do have, and this is a great example of how this public-private partnership can impact and multiply our efforts. So I just, I wanted to highlight that. I want to thank our staff and our partners for engaging in this work and accomplishing this for our students and our community.
I just wanted to add to that for a second. I had the distinct pleasure and honor to teach at North High School while Mr. Haynes was my principal. So I can, I have personal knowledge of how his heart belongs to this project and to what we're trying to accomplish for North High School. So my own thank yous, as a matter of fact, he's the one that gave me the letter sweater because I went to so many football games, he figured I should letter in going to football games. And Mr. Breshear, I would like to add to your 80,000, the over thousands of threads and posts on just my Facebook page from my former students who were then sharing with each other, and, I mean, it just exploded on Friday. So, I mean, as Ms. Full and everybody else has said, there's no way to underestimate how impactful this is going to be. One thing I want to share with the board members, because one of my former students brought this up, he was Mr. Sessions, who was one of our track stars. And he said, hmm, no track. And I happen to know the reason, so you all can share with people if you have to, is I know that the design of this facility specifically had as an objective to not take any houses out in the neighborhood, and to add the track would have expanded it in a way that would have impacted the neighborhood in terms of housing. So if anybody asks you why there's no track, just be sure to tell them that. The other thing that my former football player kiddos were talking about was how hard it was to have Coach Martin get them all pumped up in the lecture hall and then get on a bus and take the bus to Northwest, their home field, and how it was hard to stay pumped up for that trip. So being able to get pumped up and then just go right across the street is going to make so much of a difference. I'm going to assume that that is most of the discussion for this motion, so let's get on with it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the funding agreement with the Omaha Public Schools Foundation for the construction of a new stadium and a renovation of existing facilities at North High School.
Some second.
Okay. I think I had Ms. Magnuson make the motion. Was that you? Okay, and seconded by Mr. Smith. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Snipes.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Paul. The most enthusiastic aye I've ever done. Cracky.
Aye.
Aye.
Magnuson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aidai.
Let's have a little bit of applause for what's about to happen at North High School. I look forward to wearing this sweater again, fall of 2027. Hopefully, it's not a hot August day for the first football game. Okay, next up is approval of the Legislative Committee report, including recommended legislative positions. I'll just read that for you all to bring you up to speed. There are no changes to the legislative summary this week, so today's report will be relatively brief with no action necessary. Committee hearings are now complete, and senators are focused on all-day floor debate. I want to mention a couple of bills that are particularly relevant. First, LB 689 had a hearing before the Retirement Systems Committee on March 28. LB 689 would permit recently-retired teachers to serve as substitute teachers more than the current limit of eight days a month. We testified in support of that bill, and Senator Lenowski, who introduced it, told the committee he would be requesting an interim study to look at additional ways to make it easier for recent retirees to serve as substitute teachers. I just want to note that I'm good with anybody that wants to go say thank you in person, because, you know, that's what happens in legislation. LB 192 was debated on the floor last week. It was introduced by Senator Quick, and it would eliminate the sunset date under the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Many of our families would benefit from this change, and it passed from general file to select file with 33 votes. LB 143 was also debated on the floor. It was introduced by Senator Roundtree, and it changes provisions relating to student enrollment for military families. It passed on final reading with 47 votes and has been sent to the governor. It codifies our current practice. The next several weeks will focus primarily on senator-designed priority bills and standing committee priority bills. This will continue until sometime around the 70th legislative day, approximately April 29, when the Appropriations Committee is required to advance the budget for consideration by all senators. The legislature will have until day 80, tentatively May 19, yeah, May 15, sorry, to get the budget passed. passed. It is important to note that the Appropriations Committee is currently working to find solutions to the projected nearly $300 million shortfall for the current biennium. Because of that, we anticipate that bills that either reduce spending or increase revenue will take center stage. Once a budget has been passed, it goes to the governor for signature, veto, or line item. Any remaining time will largely be spent on Senator and committee priority bills. The 90th and final date of the session is scheduled for June 9. Let me close by thanking the members of the Legislative Committee, again, Ms. Snipes, and Dr. Holman, and our lobbyists, and our staff, for all their work keeping track of all these bills. And this concludes the report of the Legislative Committee. Oh, I have to move to approve the report? Okay, I moved to, I moved to approve the report of the Legislative Committee. We have not made any changes to our legislative positions. No second is needed. Roll call. I mean, roll call, please.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Magnuson.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Adai.
Motion passes. Great, thank you very much. Another information item, Policy Committee update and recommended new policy 5301. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. The Policy Committee met on March 27. In attendance were myself, Ms. Erdenberger, and Ms. Full. The, we continued to discuss the Code of Conduct. We expect that the Code of Conduct will be on probably the, I guess we shouldn't promise. It will be on the agenda soon for consideration. There are just a few more things to wrap up. We also discussed Policy 8230, board attendance at conferences and travel. Very briefly, we tabled that for further discussion to include Ms. Snipes. We also discussed Policies 1060, 8232, 8272 concerning political activity on school grounds. No, no decisions to make any changes to those policies at this time, but we are discussing. We also, in connection with the Code of Conduct, the changes, some of the changes to the Code of Conduct, they will be driven by statutory changes. There was a statute based that provided a model policy regarding dress code in our district, and so we will be adopting that, altered slightly just to make it make sense within the context of our district and our policies. In many ways, largely consistent with how we have done dress code before, but also does add some requirements with regard to training and accommodation of requests for waivers of the dress code. But that code, the version that is posted is the model code. The red lines are just art changes, but this is a brand-new, otherwise a brand-new policy. With that, I'll, this is on as an information item, so just as an FYI for now, I'll certainly take any questions on that or any of our other Policy Committee items.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tealyn about the policies he's reported or other policies? Ms. Full?
Is this the first reading of the new grooming?
Just an information item. We'll have first and second.
Okay. I just want to mention.
Yep. I also don't want to promise. We may ask a wave second, but we'll get it on at least one more time.
Thank you very much. There's one receipt of report on the agenda tonight, Head Start Monthly Board Report for February 2025, and there will be no closed session this evening. So if you were counting on closed session, you're going to be disappointed. This concludes our meeting this evening. Let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 7:31.